Everyone talk at the same time, alright? Open up. Seriously. Alright, I'm marrying the way.
Will you tell me?
Hmm?
Will you tell us?
Alright, alright. Good evening and welcome to the City of Montgomery Joint Public Meeting, a special meeting for April 29th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's exactly 6:00 PM and we have a quorum. With that, we'll go ahead and meet with the Pledge of Allegiance and then begin on this meeting. So, United States flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag?
Honor of the Texas flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, and a power, indivisible.
We've seen any comments this evening, so we'll move on to the special agenda. All items on the special agenda are for discussion and/or action. Item number three on your agenda? Discussion on terms of proposed development agreement with BCS Capital, development number 2415. Mr. Wasn't C.
The point of this meeting is the, so the city has a group, both the MDC and council have been presented by BCS their proposals on the plans and talked about the development agreement and a MOU was entered into public. So, now is where the process of developing the actual development agreement. One major substance of that is where do those dollars come from? And so, you know, the tools are the buckets that play are obviously you have your sales tax component from the MDC portion, the city's portion, there are a couple portions we can't use. So, the tax deduction, tax reduction component and the CCPD component are off the table and can be used for this. And then you also had to have more taxes that are buckets that are as options to be used upon this fee. So, the point of today is not to, if there is a draft development agreement in front of me, can't really do that because we worked out the terms of at least what is what we're going to propose in there? And what is that split look like? And we felt, you know, since it has both parties' components in here, having everyone at once to talk about how that works, things will all intersect and be bought and back and forth between meetings to get that here. So, what is in front of you is an impole base, and this is just a starting point. That has kind of just pulled up, so as we run through scenarios, we'll plug them in and tell them what they're doing. But, first thing in front of you is a detail of the numbers, a breakdown of some scenarios. Starting at the top of the sheet, again, I think most of y'all have seen this before. The development cost, so we look at the estimated cost of the linear utility, the roadway improvements, the impact fees, that totals $3 million. Following over to the far right-hand side of the page, your reimbursement account. You, based on the discussions, was the portable linear and the roadway, not impact fees, is about $2.5 million. Public infrastructure, there's a little bit to reimburse. They have also requested, and it's per the MOU, is there the $4 million whole reimbursement? But that additional million have to use rough numbers as economic incentives to come to the city. Keep on going down the sheet, you'll see their projected annual sales tax revenues, that $55 million, that is per the development when it stabilizes. So, this obviously is not day one, that property is developed out, as well as their estimated assessed value at full development. So, $71 million today, for sake of comparison, that property is about $1.5 million. That is what it has shown on the actuals per, so about $7 million additional valuation to that property when it is fully developed. Going down, you're seeing the sales tax breakdown, again, based on the sales tax numbers, that $55 million, what would that equate to and what is that split? So, that shows you on an annual basis that the cities, one set, would equate revenue by 2,900. Follow it down the sheet. Add more tax, what that currently looks like, what is debt, what is maintenance, what are the revenues? And then you add all of what is the potential to the city if, you know, the city kept all of it from the sales tax revenue, add more revenue, about $1.4 billion to the city. So, the bottom portion, and I'm not, I'll go through the rest of the documents, just make sure all on the same page. But the bottom portion is just, start with the examples of the different ways that you can split this to hit. Some of the terms that council and MDC had talked about was not to exceed a 10-year payback period to hit the $4 million outage. And so, that is what that shows. Now, we try to go conservative with this, so we assume that the first three years, there's zero effect. Like you said, there's going to be some development, there's going to be some sales tax, but they're estimating three years to stabilize the development and have revenue generation. So, we just assume those first three years are a wash. So, that 10-year payback on the first option, that actually paid out the setup the first three years is worth something. The rest, y'all, seeing this already, not to go through the details, although it's behind the, you have a topic that you ran about changing, with the exhibit showing the scope of the projects that are listed in the MOU. And with that, open it up to discussion of the relevant numbers and questions.
What's the difference between last page and first page?
Only thing to differ is that the present for long, so we added what the city will be keeping in each of those portions. So, on that bottom portion, so the total, you know, both of them receive into capital and then both able to reimburse them. So, if you follow this first call, it's the city 100%, MDC 0, AB 10. The city, in a team, in that one year, the city would give away 571 and they would retain 815 of the total that comes in. So, if the total comes in at the 1.386, 571 is a delta goes to city. So, how much of the total that you collide with the power person's statement?
I got you.
And that's really the difference between these two. The numbers at the top of the standing, the valuations of the standing, we're just adding an additional, so we can see, okay, $4,000 at a point.
Right.
How the city steward, did you mention that? He's potentially game for a minute, I'll just come out of the form then. If that was required, maybe it's a requirement.
There are a couple things that apply in, and one of them, so per the agreement, if it's required, their request is to go to 4.7, you just said the call that wrote this sound.
So, here's my, yeah, on that, on this.
Yeah, 4.8, the city steward would be about 40K.
Yeah, but here's the thing, guys, at every turn, at every turn, we are developing this property for them. 100%, the taxpayer is developing this property for them. We are reimbursing 100% plus every dime that they're putting into it, other than the purchase price. This is not a great deal for taxpayers.
Well, so like we talked about in the meeting, there is a partnership and it's a public road, so it is a public road for taxpayers, taxpayers, you know, that.
It's not a partnership though, Sarah, because we're paying 100% for it.
They're paying it, remember, we said they're paying it upfront and then we're getting, because we don't have the capital to pay for it right now. So, they're to pay for it and we're paying them back for a public road. But the public uses, a lot of people that will be, or people that will be on that road will be spending money in their development to get it back. So, it does help us because it gives us to go, us to work this at the, at, over the years and set it upfront. That was the big selling point.
I'm not saying the development isn't a good development. I'm saying they're asking too much money from this taxpayer. Because all they're doing, so if you invest $4 million, like if we just took, say, you know, we got $4 million and we invest over 10 years and don't touch it. This, this will take 20, 25 years to get to the same amount. Because we're going 10 years without a dent. But very little.
I was gonna say, I thought we were getting.
Well, 100% of it, if you look, 100% city gone, 50% of the MDC gone. And the only thing we're going to get is a blower, if it's built out.
What do you mean, if it's built out, you don't think it can be built out?
We've got commercial buildings all around this town, brand new, sitting empty.
I have to agree with you there, but.
So, it's present of hundreds, we're paying for public infrastructure plus 1.5.
So, we're going to pay.
Paying for everything.
Oh, we're paying for it. We're paying the utilities, we're paying the streets, plus we're paying basically reimbursing them for the retaining walls, reimbursing them for the ponds.
Yeah, and 1.5 is another thing, but the linear utilities, one million, that's water, sewer lines. And the water line, I think it doesn't need this because it provides a loop. So, it's in the water line.
Some good, and good, but some reimbursed.
I mean, we probably need that anyway, regardless of Academy coming or not at some point. Same thing with the sewer, I could see that benefit to taxpayers. The roads are in the repair, they probably weren't constructed right, so that's still on the city for the.
Absolutely.
Regardless of whether Academy is coming or not, so now, if they're going to come in, then I think it's not like we're just wasting taxpayer money on Academy work and putting this towards.
It all goes back in eventually, but it's the extra that we're paying that on.
1.5 is separate.
Right, I have no problem reimbursing, we're giving them back the impact fees. In what, in what world do we do that?
Or, yeah, on paper or not, but we are giving them 1.5.
So, I don't mind reimbursing that for all the city stuff that we, that we would normally have to pay for. It's the extra that their developers are basically going to profit.
Well, Casey, honestly.
Because it's not like they're not going to make a profit.
It's not too hard for them, so, you know, I feel like it's a good development for our city because, and we are just paying it out right away.
Well, I agree, it, it, I'm not, like I said, the development, okay, but what it looks like, when you pencil it all out, we are, that development is going to profit immensely off monthly taxpayer.
But we will too.
Not to the extent, and that's, a partnership should be closer to 50/50 than 80/20.
I still think that.
Especially when we're spending taxpayer money.
But, but we will benefit from it. Over and above all the other issues, but I understand what you're saying.
Yes, I do too, but it's also bringing, there's a restaurant that was not going to come into the city that's now going to come into the city, which is a high revenue generating restaurant because of this development.
I can answer.
But, yeah, and, 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 so I'm not milestone, I don't know what, I hear the red over there is wicked expensive and the management is not wicked management. So, that's why there's, there's openings in their house, but it's not because, uh, there's nobody.
We have lots of them.
Well, but there's, the ones across the street, they're being built out, they're being rented out.
There's always a reason.
There's always a reason.
That they're vacant, and look at the Berkshire Park lot, I can.
Now, two big, those two big spaces are getting rented out. Why? Because there's not newer places to go that's with good management and good prices.
But I do appreciate your observations, though, Trey.
I'm just saying, it's not, it just doesn't look like a great deal. We are, we are dumping a ton of taxpayer money at the, towards the profit of a development company.
We also will profit too.
Yeah, but our profit is taken out, well, it may, if, if it works out, we're taking a risk, and that's what we're all doing.
And that's what you have to.
The city.
100%, you, yes, I think we do take risks every day, we do take the risk and, and some of these developments, these residential developments, we, we, one of them in particular, it's going to be tieback on the win, I can tell you right now.
But we don't have taxpayer money scaling the game on commercial, on, on these residential developments. We don't, not to the extent that this is.
Okay, so it happens as much as, but I'm saying.
They're taking a higher risk than that developer is.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Because if, if we sit back, let's just look at, you're saying, we're going to make money off all this sales tax, right? What do you think they're going to make? We get a fraction of.
Everybody's going to make money, I'm not saying.
They're taking the highest risk.
No, they're, they're coming to develop it for tens of millions of dollars.
They're taking their money back, they're taking their business.
I'm sitting right here, this is what this is. Absolutely, but they have to generate their revenue to get this back.
Hey, yeah.
But there is a risk. If the, if the revenue is not generated, they don't get paid back. It's self-sustaining.
The risk is on the city, not on the developer.
What do y'all have to say, MDC?
We just enjoy the show.
But, y'all, y'all have an important part, I mean, I think.
Is to invite the economy. I don't think, it's just happening already naturally. People are coming to the, to zoom in. My question is, will this Academy bring more people to the city? And do we have the infrastructure to support that? That's about how I'm balancing it. Do we have the water, the sewer to continue this growth? Are we doing it responsibly? Are we spending our money right? I don't mind incentivizing guys, as long as we're okay with the financials.
I, I, I agree with Ryan, I think, I think we have the infrastructure placed anyway, no matter what. So, if we can pay it out over time, because the city, we are growing, it will grow exponentially quickly. We have to find ways to subsidize that growth. And if developers are willing to skin the game, which they are, and bring in high-volume retailers, which they are, then I think we should, there should be some quick book. Now, to me, 1.5, I don't know, maybe that's something that's negotiable somewhere in there. And the last number we looked at was 4.5 total. And there was a six-acre pond, a detention pond, so I don't know what's been done since then to mitigate some of that, or if it's still.
You know, the whole thing, and I understand Casey's point of view, but the whole thing about this is that we are actually getting these services now and paying for them later. Kind of like when I was raising children, I would go to Bell's and put something on later and get it back, you know? But, you know, seriously, I think this is a really good project.
But over, over 10 years, will the city need this $1.5 million to pay for additional wells? Pay for expansion of infrastructure and things, that's what I'm concerned about. I don't mind incentivizing development, but do we have the funds to actually, to, to do that type of incentive? I don't know, I've looked at.
But nobody was at first.
And it seems like we're on the edge of being able to fund some of this infrastructure.
Yeah, and, you know, and that's, that's a good. 100%, I mean, I think that, you know, what we're doing now is there's a lot of, we do have feasibility at the time. And then, you know, a lot of those prospective feasibility settings happen September, and then they show back up, you know, last month, so villages and meet a lot of them. So, it's, what Zach is working on now is going back through, taking the finer details and bringing it back to you, okay? Do we need to, in this development agreement says, you have this capacity at this time, this capacity at this time? Because the Academy doesn't, they're not, from a water situation. Three other multi-family units is a completely different. You know, retail, what they're talking about, they don't use a ton of water, but the, the multi-family is what, what gives us cost. That's that big driver in the use. And so, we're re-letting those now, on an annual basis, we're cutting back down to quarterly basis and bringing that back to y'all. So, okay, now that all these things are, seems like it moves forward, or is that being a good, and what is that time of the year? It is, if there's one reason for structure costs, there's a specialty coming up in a couple weeks. You sit down with an supervisor or you go into funding, funding options for a contractor. What this does is specific to, I think Ryan's point on the water line. This water line is a critical piece, because right now, in all the water, in Home Depot, it goes either that one-star apartment and one of five four goes through downtown, Drew's follow lines, and so it goes a long route. So, this helps, the project helps with the gun, see, it's a needed line no matter what, it's on the capital list. But, you know, yes, there are $1.5 million on top of those improvements that is being asked.
And we're not, we don't, we shouldn't be looking for something perfect, we should be looking for something palatable, we say, this is good. And Mary Ann, as our finance director, where do we stand? Does this look like a good deal from our book standpoint? Or does this look like we need to, Shadon, I mean, you're, you're a critical piece in the development and cost.
So, the biggest thing is, the only way they get their money is by us giving their money first. So, the businesses have to perform, the value has to be on the ground, or they're not going to get any green first.
Right.
We talked a little bit about that before. One of the biggest things, as Ryan pointed out, this is the incentive. So, that $4 million number, to Casey's point of like, what is that 1.5 that you're paying for? That was what they provided as an example. Doesn't mean you're actually necessarily paying for that retaining wall. We need to look at it as they need an additional 1.5 million in incentives to be able to make that deal work. And that's what was agreed upon in that MOU with committing to being able to help them. And so, it is an incentive for the developer. You build it, we'll bring these entities here, and we will continue to see increased people here, right? So, not just spending dollars at Academy or those restaurants, but potentially spending money in other establishments here. And so, that's really the thing, you know, to keep in mind. Right now, as it sits there undeveloped, we don't give anything anyways, but we don't give anything out, right? So, the city isn't out anything, but, you know, the one thing, good thing about what we kind of talked about when we did that 3D piece is if you give it all back out, what does that do for you in the short term while that agreement is there? You're still providing increased services, you're providing increased lease coverage, all of those type of things. So, my caution is that we don't give it all back out right away, right? That we look at a portion of how we could reach that requirement.
Timely, timely, right.
Chris, can I say quickly?
It's not a 100%, 100%.
What, what is the additional, what is the additional infrastructure? How does that sort of hone the runway for future opportunities?
So, what this does is deliver maps specific to, no, I'm talking outside. Correct, so the water line portion, obviously having that water line along Buffalo Springs, that property, the Randy Lake property, now has a water line on Buffalo Springs or Parkland.
Which will eliminate the cost in future.
Correct, that I'd be waiting on. Yeah, 12 inches, yeah, 12 inches on those sides, yeah, let's put that aside.
So, so there's, there's, so there's greater infrastructure opportunities once these other property is developed, correct?
Correct.
And we wouldn't have to offer any kind of incentives in terms of infrastructure for those.
Because of the deal. And the payment, restart, you stop seeing certain things that potentially continue that.
Correct, yeah, that's what we would like. First of all, Breck and me is trying to work our way down Buffalo Springs. I guess one question. So, the city in the words has the pro-rata share component of infrastructure, or oversizing of the infrastructure. Would, in this case, if the city paid for that infrastructure through reimbursement, could the city go and try, it would still be on the impact fee list? So, we're going to carry that cost and impact fees, you're allowed to carry that cost forward. Could we also try to get a pro-rata from that property number that directly benefits when they develop in the future?
I think that's, that could be a level beyond an impact fee.
That's, that's kind of the second point, because it's in the.
It's a great idea, is it leap?
Did you say, Casey?
True story.
It kind of sounds like you're double dipping, but it's not.
Which is why I, because we have those two toolboxes, and so we have to reimburse the infrastructure as a pro-rata component, not combine that with impact fees, so we can pick either one. Impact fees obviously, citywide, goes into the cost, it's already in the calculation of your impact fees, and you can then carry that cost forward to recuperate.
So, it'd be the building structure.
But it wouldn't technically be double dipping, would it?
So, if we would capture some of the, so the cost of this line, we would be capturing a portion of the cost from all the elements of the city. Because it goes into an impact fee calculation. Roadway is not, so roadway, you got the roadway impact fees, roadway is staying alone.
And already, I'm saying that, that they're capitalizing on is because of this MOU, they acquired that six acres, going to acquire, they have acquired the six acres south of Ransoms, of which they're not asking us to reimburse anything to the impact fees, but, but I think this is going to be part of it. I don't think he was going, I think, if I heard him correctly, he said that, that he was going to add it in here, there's not going to be any changes to this. So, that's, that's a big incentive too.
Those two also backing up to the subject track, with the six acre detention retention. I hate those things. But the bottom line is the developer is losing a lot of space by having that. And I understand there are alternate drainage areas that they could have used, whether it's feasible or cost-wise or whatever. They didn't have to lose that, they'd have to have a big pond in the middle of the front.
But what happened is they lost, the, the other, the other landowner was not willing to let them drain it because it would affect his.
Right.
Yeah, so the place that they got one off was nice building.
That's like future developments too.
Everything runs, what's south, going down to the DOE, so the DOE is not interested.
Well, I was also going to go behind furrows into the Randy Pond.
They go east toward Service Creek.
Yeah.
And I, I've talked to the over time too, I think if they have to have ponds on.
Yeah, they're in.
I think they're over, exaggerated, on the.
And they said that too.
That's not quite his number, we're just saying that now we converted those numbers that they wanted to put for detention as just incentive.
Right.
Correct, yeah, not officially, and we've tried to make that very clear, just as we go, city is a much accepted, reverse it for that, that's still private, still indoors. But, the fact that when they come back and say, hey, here's the cost of our, to do this project, the detention pond and retaining walls or those lighthives, I think their numbers are 2.2 million on those, which is why I'm just saying, hey, you want a portion of that back, I want to talk about that. So, could it?
It could.
It could, and it's one of the points that was brought up by council, and it's not really reflective in here just because it is a MOU, but somehow, sadly, if you estimate your cost at 2.2 million and you're able to trade your pond and gain land area or reduce construction costs, if it's 10% reduction cost, if you do 10% reduction in the total reimbursement.
That would be even five or three years. We have to prove that we can make them, reduce their cost, because any, any developers worth their salt's going to, they don't hit for a minute.
Right, and that's where we have, we have gotten that mark, we started this, and then it's going to take some, somebody that has some staff and they're trying to go down and check out that, check out that block.
And then, this, this city steward, what's, I mean, that would just, he gave up all the incentive, five, the 1.5, right? We go before 4.7, was the likelihood, he's doing that impact analysis, and was the likelihood of having a gender that was also.
I think that now, so this MOU is for the 30 acres. They have now acquired the six acres that's over the front side of the city steward. So, whereas at first they only had a small portion front end of the city steward, it was a multi-family, now they have everything except Ransoms front of the city steward, wood front, so I think that they, they close that six acres or also develop, I put a high probability that they will need to improve city steward as well.
From 1.5 the whole way, or just from, from?
So, the way that this, the original feasibility contemplated was, it was north of. So, it was going back to the asphalt road, not going with concrete, large rail line, you know, Buffalo Springs. If they now were doing the six acres, I would likely recommend that they rehab all the city steward to the intersection for 1.5. Again, sticking with asphalt, that is not that same type of traffic as Buffalo Springs.
Yeah, but you've got that 14-acre church coming in there.
I was going to say, can they not share cost in there?
We have the development agreement.
It's not 1.5.
No, we have it. No, we could still ask them.
What's in the, their draft development agreement that they are currently reviewing? They are living the portion of the water line in front of their property, so it goes that 12-inch. So, they're working, and then we ask, what's in the agreement is having an extended sidewalks to be able to connect to the sidewalks. We just did on Clipper, so we have full walkability from their property all the way to downtown. So, those are the two items, they do not have.
Hold on, Tom, that, their property does not connect to Clipper sidewalks.
Correct, there will be a small gap. There will be a small gap. So, a gap in front of raceway.
Race track.
So, there would be a gap there, they would do everything all of that.
They would do front land, they would do in front of the...
Yeah, just in front of their property.
Right. So, that's not, so that's a gap, that's a big gap. So, the gap would be between their property and, I'm sorry, Casey.
So, they're not probably going to be costing that many, because they've got their man on that.
So, based on what I was thinking by... Storage two blocks. The facility is a small facility with plans for future expansion, but there's not a lot of that. Can't remember what it is exactly, but in their initial base, they do a lot of green space, open space.
So, yeah, I mean, the EDC figures out there's a chance they may come back asking for more money to pay for the road equipment loans.
They, they would try to get, they kind of have a burden of this MOU within the red, the bottom, you could see it, you want the other guys in that business. You're going to have to pull your tooth out of my head before I bring that in.
Well, and we don't know, I mean, the shipley's coming, any costs from that six acres? I don't know. I mean, based on the property?
Here's for sale.
Yeah, it's all going to be, well, that's going to get involved.
I mean, the EDC, we've got very small pieces. We're basically, I'm okay with the infrastructure, we're from the waterline, the streets, this 1.5.
That's what I struggle with myself.
That's a question.
Well, 1.5 can give something in dollars.
Doesn't really, we don't have any risk with providing that reimbursement. We're not paying for water, we're not for water, we're for super planes, so I'm not really worried about it. I'm, I'm more bringing in more of the public, because that increases the value of bringing in new residents and businesses. So, if you get one more amenities, if you have one more businesses, you want to start to shop here, you have.
People will be in one of them.
Well, we're being one of them here. So, we become more, what is the city right now, everyone kind of leave the city, but you can, more places bring in.
It'll help the downtown businesses as well, because you'll have people staying here, shopping here, eating here, living here, and not leaving here.
So, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm okay with, doesn't incentivize anything much. I don't know what we really needed. I think Academy is here in regardless, but that's not, that's...
I think they'll come, they'll become, they'll become a point where we don't have to make all these...
But they're going to come with developers, like this whole deal, they're not going to come and buy the property themselves and develop it themselves.
Yeah.
But it is important that we, we don't...
They have losses.
Yes, they have, we have to give each other anyway, right? Those developers tend to follow each other anyway. They sure do, yeah, they know, they know. So, in the beginning of these talks, there was a mention of hotel. Is that still on the plan?
No, no, unless, no.
They lost the space with the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
It's underwater to make the...
So, the EDC, I mean, it's not really a part of our back, other than we use that future tactic, but I'm, that's what our role is, is to provide, bring in amenities, like big box orders, I'm kind of in, I take box orders. We don't have anything at Academy here, it's other services appropriate with the surrounding businesses that will come. I think it's...
What typically comes with Academy? Is anybody...
I think what they promote, or what they were showing as their examples, I believe, was like TJ Maxx Home Goods, Marshall's, Ross, Smashers.
That's correct. Yeah, Home Goods, TJ Maxx.
All sorts, I can do in this area, there's no place for ladies to really shop, not in beauty, so.
And guy clothes, when they have guy clothes, y'all don't have to go anywhere to shop here. You don't. Gentlemen.
Yeah, you're right.
So, we haven't agreed upon MOU, right? Two to four million dollars. The part of that, I guess, the Stevie Stewart part, I raise a fit about the four million, because I have, I struggle with the 1.5. But when I really struggle is, we're going to incentivize the 1.5, and then they just come back with their handout and ask for more, for another 800 grand to develop a street.
Well, maybe we just put a financial, or at least put a cap on it.
Now, the next...
I don't understand that eight, is that, is that, is eight for the whole street, or is it more?
It was roughly, so, just like more than half.
That more of Ransoms, within that quarter.
A mill and a couple of...
That's what it is for it, I guess.
And what would that cost if we wanted, we wanted to do Stevie Stewart over our own?
The cost estimate we did, I think, was like 760.
Yeah, again, so they profit again.
But not the whole move, but the whole road.
I don't have full underheadings, so let's just say it's half, or it's a 1.4.
Yeah, but this is only for the most second.
Yeah, yeah.
So, see, in every turn, they build profit, either everything they want reimbursement for.
Well, this is MOU, and this is also cushion, and we told them to go back and sharpen their pencils, so I don't know that this is the sharpened pencil number. So, this is just, they give us a do not exceed, and what can we do with that? This is not the final numbers.
Correct. I think that's where, you know, getting the, how we structure the, there's a cost or lean area savings due them on that intention that that is granted in some way, shape, or form.
Right, and we said we want to see your receipt, so we can pay you back amount. You don't get 4 million dollars, and this is, that 1.498900 is free money, because we want to see where you spent it.
Yes.
So, my question is to the EDC, the four options at the bottom, right? Since we have EDC here, which one would you guys be interested in from the EDC standpoint?
Well, you've got small, medium, and large, right?
What do you think, Casey? What would you think?
I'm on the board as well.
Small is good. I love you.
I'm on the board as well. But I think we would be fine with the 69K. I mean, I think we would be right.
The what? Well, I'm impressed, I thought I was going to go second one. Oh, okay.
Somewhere, somewhere around there, it'd be good. I don't understand the act of alarm reception on the Florida light.
So, so what that is to say, okay, if you take the, so, the first number is the city's portion of the sales tax, city's portion, or the EDC's portion of the sales tax, and then add the law, so we can only take from the minimum, cannot take from that service. So, if the city was going to incentivize an act of alarm using some of that increased valuation as part of the cost.
So, but it's still part of, would it still be the city putting that money out, or is that not it yet?
It would, so we, so how this is structured, it says, okay, if they're putting an additional 70 million dollars of value, the city would take the, in that first problem, 10% of that additional act of alarm revenue and put that toward reimbursement.
So, let me put it back to the city, what do you guys say? I mean, some of you are on the EDC board as well. Where do you, where do you stand?
I think it's also relooking at the term, because obviously, this is, these are, first three years are lush, and so it's essentially you're paying it back over seven years. So, you know, obviously, if you extend that term out, if you say 15, there's pros and cons to that, but you keep more.
To the three years, you're saying we don't, we'll collect a lot because it's building out, but we'll do collect, we just go ahead and keep, and then...
No.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, okay. I understand, it's not that robust.
Two additional revenue from first three years, and everything gets improved. Not realistic, but...
I think the problem like they're, they're going to come in, is, so Academy comes in, you give them 1.5, reimburse them for ten years, HEB comes in, you give them something, another store comes in, you give them something, and so now we're like, we're not getting any impact, I mean, from all this stuff coming in, all this sales tax, everything, EDC really...
So, we just looked at it.
You know, we're in here, we don't need any more money coming in. We have our own goals about preserving downtown, we'll work on that, so, are we okay with that? We're okay with incentivizing Academy. That's not why we're going to have to start taking that away from the can.
Like, so we just looked at the 380 agreements, and we've got three or four agreements about to roll off and end in the next two or three years. So, that means that we, those agreements expire. Number one, number two, we also asked how much of our commercial has been built out, and only 40% has been built out. So, timing, so we still have 60% for future, so it's not like we're hitting it at 80%, and we don't really need to do this.
It's like, it's like, you start, okay, you've got to put out...
Absolutely.
So, you have to put out and get something.
For sure.
And I think if we just bite the bullet a little bit on these early adopters, if you want to call them that, I mean, the rest of them are going to come anyway, you've always said they will, they will, and...
And they are.
And they are. And the tertiary businesses that are going to come and benefit from this are, it's the, we don't know the number. I mean, it's not even...
Let's forget it here.
That's what I need to know, because we have empty lots, or brokers in danger, why are they not bringing in, you know, development services? So, they're...
So, that's what's my fear, is that we have many, many empty commercials spots right now, and here they come with this big 30 acres, empty spots.
I just want to know if developers have this vehicle, who's their anchor, and they have a few reasons, it's a point that they follow them around.
Well, I think the rooftops that are coming into the area are running more than compensating building.
I think the rooftops are coming in.
So, so, maybe, you know, we don't have to do this for everybody.
But maybe we bite the bullet for them, or for something. That's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that we, we're making work in the, you want it, you choose. I, I mean, we, there's an HEB that's going to...
I mean, you wouldn't do it for...
One of the differences about HEB is, so, you know, we're working through that here as well, they don't front these streets, so it's all tax out. So, they're doing the tax out on purpose, so they're doing the Prince 24, Tard Lane, etc. There's not that city component, so the only city infrastructure for their side is they're extending water and sewer along the front.
Yeah, but Chris, we don't have, do we have a 380 with them, or no?
No.
They're trying to HEB, or all their stores are going to come. I mean, we're going to do fine.
It's just saying that the draft development agreement's in their hands, there is no reimbursement for projects.
And it's HEB for a lot of that.
And then, I want to say, if they can access for a 1.5 incentive dollars, which is kind of, I mean, they could kind of, what we need is to pump it forward, too.
That, that's my exact point. We've got bigger businesses that made us better deals, and, and here we are incentivizing for a group of developers to make a profit.
Yeah, but Casey, the way you've got it, this is smart, guys, don't have the deep pocket.
Oh, I agree, but there's more to watch.
You're going to have to incentivize the young graduates, to give them a chance to let up. We're not giving them a handout, we're just giving them a let up. And I don't see this as being a passive, it's not going to pay a huge shit on us, it's not just kind of money, it's not a big deal. I think if it's...
Casey, it's not like now, I'm just putting a building there.
Except to me, we'd be, we would be, of course.
I'm sure. I think it's a smart, I think it's a smart move.
That's the first, when we rebuild it, then we'll... It's just, we're in, we are the builder green right now.
And obviously, it looks, Home Depot is 12 miles that way, and Academy's going to be 12 miles that way. Academy's that way, a little bit 15 miles, and Home Depot's 12 miles. Like, we are in a, in a sweet spot, that's going to cannibalize some of those, and they're going to be here. And then, because we're by the lake, that HEB, our Clover, you see our tax dollars, it's huge in the summer, because people go to the lake and they go do all of their shopping there first. The same with the Academy, they're going to swing by there, get their tubes, get their flip tops and mud really.
It's about a 10 year simulation when you're looking at growth like this anyway. So, just know it's coming, it's going to be coming in growth. So, you know, our job is, I'm just speaking from an EDC standpoint, I agree with Ryan, is to incentivize businesses, to give them an opportunity to have a starting shot at success, and I think we will.
And 1.5 million dollars over 10 years is 150,000 dollars a year.
It's nothing. It's nothing. It's a drop in the bucket.
I have a question, sorry to interrupt, but the, the multifamily will be a big drain really on the water. That's, the improvements to the water well and the wastewater treatment plant expansion, that's included their share of those potential projects in the future. So, if you have another 100 gallons, like, or 100 gallons, they're taking their share of, okay, a future 1,000 gallon well, they're going to take 10% of that, and this impact fee, right?
Yes. Costly, I mean, so, and that's what you put for the updated maintenance assumptions, you've done some additions, and going through updating those impact fees. Prices are cheaper, and, you know, the timeline is accelerating. So, you know, these projects that we thought of and are now coming back, so now there's more that has to be done in a shorter amount of time.
So, the impact, the city gets paid for that upfront?
So, the, what, there's two different ways that the city, so, how the board agrees is to assess at the time applied and do at the time of connection. Since the city is now doing development agreements, we're asking for all of the pay at the time applied. So, instead of, like, every bed, for example, they, when they did their final apply for section two, they paid all the impact fees at the time that applied. Same thing for Red. And we're writing that into, most of the agreements are just all, because now we believe that they're paying at the time applied. Obviously, of course, it's a little bit harder, because we don't know if it's going to be a, a bank or a college on whether impact is going to be. But, so, we're working through that, you know, that is, because I mean, we pay estimated and we pay a true up when it gets to that time to help with that cash flow, because that's, that's the biggest thing right now, just the cash flow to get it in to support issuing debt and taking the other buckets.
So, I understand, too, also, the highest investors in the piece of property are the multifamily. I can't answer my own question, I'm still a member of the, so, why are we doing that as opposed to my acting commercial, I guess, the apartment guys at the bank is the bottom line?
That is how ECS guys, it's, it's order, so, to make the deal, they'll sell off the 13 to 14 acres on the north end to, I believe, the boarding group, or the apartments. So, that will help with the upfront capital of the view to take the rest of the stuff.
I should kind of understand correctly, they're, their apartments on Pine Lake, those really nice big apartments up there that are high, a class A.
They exist, they...
Lovely, or...
Yeah.
Real. But to the...
You're more in the, in the city, they're in, saying the city, so...
We don't have a file, right now, we're still above the plane.
I don't know, this is kind of nobody, really. I mean, I see, Casey, I appreciate your point, but I just think we've got to put a stop, so...
I'm not against the development, I'm against the actual incentivizing, something that will come on its own if we wait for the red development.
I know, I, I...
But there's 10, there's 100, Casey's right, Casey's right.
Just, you have a gun in hand, why would you even, why would you, especially this bird, it's not every bird that brings Academy, and it's a...
But that's the thing, Academy was looking to come before they ever come around.
Where were they going to go? I haven't heard that. They went to Magnolia instead, because the ECS that come in here, they went to Magnolia for...
They went to Magnolia?
Yeah, they went, they went on the radar.
Well, they were on the radar, because they were calling around, trust me, this is a year and a half ago, when I started talking to Shears.
They might have been calling around, but I think that, that ECS actually convinced them that this was the first one.
So, so, Sarah, where, where are we? Are we, I ask you, is where EDC, we only have, we got, we got...
Yeah, it's just a discussion, this is just, we're just... Is there anything you see, questions that you have, anything you have to change?
Yeah, where would you land? Where would you guys land?
Where would you land?
Second one.
Second one, yeah, okay, okay.
We're...
That's it, that's the one I had.
Yep.
So, so we're, we're all on the business?
Yeah.
So who's.
No, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're not, we're not the voters.
So this is, this is for Chris to gather information to help with the development agreement.
To go get, to go get the final, yeah, to get the final.
We, we did want to write these codes and all the here, and now happy discussion, yes, and now, it's okay. If you flip off then, now we're in terms of the city size, I mean, water removal, we're still ready for ten years. And then we'll take that framework, throw it into the development agreement, and that will have to come back. Since the M E D C portion of both, you can see the council.
So we, like I said, we already voted and agreed on how much we use. So most of that, all that information is good for the, for, other than the red part.
So on city's portal, so the future does example has, look at that second column, fifty percent of M E D C. This is based on that ten year goal. It's ninety five percent of city sales tax, not the tax revenue of C C P. But we can spend zero percent add a loan. And we can, that adds up, we can plug in different numbers to show different options. Uh, that still leaves that fifty percent of M E D C as the, one of the pinch marks that we're working on of.
Uh, I mean personally, uh, the second one's good for me on the city half.
We.
So, and I just want to clarify that one more time, Chris, and I've asked twice, but, and I just didn't catch it. I know you told us. That bottom line is what we would still retain back through the split percentages, right?
Just, just go ahead. So if you go to that box one, um, total annual city revenue in full bill at 1.386. That's all sales tax, all add a loan. When you give, when you look at that second box, that five ninety four and the seven ninety one equals your one point three six. Seven ninety one, city peaks, part of that, sales tax, part of that add a loan, part of that meets.
Right.
And the five ninety four, you're paying.
There's to pay. Okay. Now that's, that's a good number. That's a good number. No. Completely reimbursing for C D stores. Well, Chris, I, I, I don't know how the rest of council feels. I, I, like I said, I struggle with the, with the reimbursement, but it, it is what it is. There's a lot of good things that will come from this, but just coming back to us with their handout again for, for, for the street.
This has been part of, they're not coming back again. This has been part of the whole time. They're talked about if this, then this. They've always been giving us both scenarios for the whole time. So it's not like they're coming back to the world.
And I listen, but, but what we're talking about is the other section of C D stores because of the new six acres.
Well, and they.
So they don't come and match nothing.
But you said that there wasn't going to be an additional.
We would have.
So they weren't going to come back.
They were not coming back.
That's what he said. I'm serious.
And that's why.
That's what he said.
I think it's under contract and building. I don't know.
I don't know this person. I haven't gone to a market. I just know that he's taken, I said, England with the change and he's like, nothing. We wouldn't ask for anything.
Well, that's, they're not known. They have to do the whole street.
I just heard the man said, right. Like, I feel, I'm just saying the man said.
Also, the person who bought a free shop on this six acres last week, what I told them, these buildings, they was based on the thirty two.
Yeah.
So we'll do a minor limit to these buildings. Okay, what would this take to add? Include those utilities that will go in and, and address the, I don't know, the whole money or not. And, yeah, I think so. By one concern, it now C D stores, so the full price, we were, so. That's what they communicate to them. Alan, is there anything else that we need, um, as far as, you know, feedback before we get too far as we're going to?
I don't think so at this point. I think we've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Very, very well. Very, very easy to understand.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item number four, consideration of possible action on a proposed branding threat in marketing weather for Montgomery, Texas. That means we will be taking action.
Yay.
Good evening. This should be easy, but very lucky. So, back to the logo. I just wanted to say that the logo, the marketing that we are wanting to do is not going to replace anything that we already have. It's just a fresh, modern look, not necessarily tied to the city, but one that speaks to tourism, economic development, marketing, events, and E D C initiatives. That is the purpose of this. Um, in my opinion, a new logo represents Montgomery in a fast forward thinking to encourage people to come to Montgomery if they see our website or brochure or something like that. Because we have a lot to offer. We have a lot of rich history. We need to promote that and keep that and move forward with a modern, sleek, attractive logo in addition to what we already have. So, does anybody have any questions that were?
Well, I was, I put this on the vice, on her, like, Stephanie and I are going, so she began, which is sweat. Do I sound?
How's that work?
No, I'm following. Please get a partner. Now you, you were at a concert and seeing one kind of T-shirt. They got five, six, seven, I was playing with, with that particular, uh, you know, with that particular, you know, prize. It's the same thing with the city. We need rugs, coffee, we need other chocolate type stuff so that we can get our brand out there. And so what I need to do is to get six more of us. And I didn't chart, I didn't go outside, I just did it myself. Because I, I want people to say, oh, the, but I'm not tired of this. This is a draft. If you see something you like, let's pick one or two and let's, let's push them down the road.
So you're calling them logos?
Well, the, the, they're probably just branding.
But this is our logo.
Yeah.
This is our seal.
These are, that's, we, we got to, that's the branding purposes. So if you, let's say you have a booth and you want to have a tent, then you find one of these, go get one, get that one on a tent. Or you have a, a T-shirt. Remember we said the protest in the Texas flag, T M, let's get it out there so we can start marketing it. That's what these are for. These are purposes, they're an official C O, official business government logo. That means they have control. Yeah. That's a goal there. That's, that's, that's it. And so we need that. So, yeah.
Now, can I show you something? Now, because I've got some logos from nearby towns and I'll show you what they're all doing. And this may be in addition to their city seal, but it's basically for marketing purposes to kind of give you an idea of what other cities around this are doing.
Yeah, sure, sure. But I think these are great. I like these.
I just have three, four and five. Wonderful.
Three, like, five, two.
Three, four and five. I mean, you could use.
I like six. I just would like a different, rather different.
Okay, so we should take a poll and get.
Why, how many do you need? Why do you need?
No, this is a paper draft, so you will over that.
I, I understand that. But.
How many?
One. And then you're going to put it on news. You're going to put it on T-shirts. You're going to put it on that. Is E D C thirty four on the bottom of your head?
That's city council, you gotta approve.
Yeah. Well, then I'm number four. Start with me.
That's the one beside your truck.
Like I said, if you come up with three, four or five, I'm happy to.
Five is the eighteen thirty seven. If we're going to go to five, five, that's eighteen thirty six.
I like five. You do, I don't know the one right.
No, no, no. I'm saying the year of the established. It's wrong.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that. I, I, I popped that one. I printed it on my, my.
You got, so Casey, pick one of those. Don't be, don't be too late.
I'll do just, I'll hear you.
I like the, another thing was one, the, the, and somebody down here said something about number six. I think we took all the stars off and just one big star on the left side of that, yeah, because it looks like the one star. I think that's great. I also like, on four and six, I'd rather have, like, I like the established. I like to have in our year that we were. But, uh, so, yeah, but I, I, I can do any of them.
If you had to pick one, I had to pick one.
We got three fours.
She has the side. That has a bad person.
Who's the third person on the court that you have?
Nobody. Oh, nobody. Oh, okay. Dan, are you?
So, you see, well, um, the one, the.
He likes one. Why?
I don't understand why we, we don't have something that's going to concentrate on the city. I don't agree with the statement that we need something generic. Because when you look at Montgomery, we're already, people call, they're already thinking we're part of the county. And I want something that's going to, but it's, we don't live in the city. I mean, we lost that chain. We don't have a city chain anymore because that chain is the name. And, you know, to me, that is.
So, so I agree with you, but, you know, when, when you, when you fill out a law book and you put your address on there that says Montgomery, Texas, that, everybody knows that's the city. See, if you, if you.
Everybody doesn't know that.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe not everybody. Your first one will do. So the rest of you is, the rest of you is staying. Doesn't, doesn't make that big difference. It's the same, because if you make your rating too much, or it's too many words. We all know that we've got wordless in the Texas law, the Delaware test, the state.
Montgomery's a long word and.
There's just a lot of, there's a lot of them. And the rating, you want it to be something where you look at it, you see it, you think it. And so, so that's all this is about.
Sure. You're going to talk about, I like, I like this. You're going to talk about the state. Uh huh. You did one and still didn't do one. So what did Brian do?
I agree with Ryan. I've got, I've got the whole, so. I got this cheese involved.
Are you zero?
I thought I had a five for the flag. I wish there was like, uh.
Yeah, so the flag is going to have an outline around it. So then establish eighteen thirty.
I just read on the top. But the thousand eighteen thirty seven, if you're there, I, I like that one.
Okay.
So I, I like one. It's not quite a city. I don't like city, uh.
I agree with you. I just think it's more Montgomery.
Because you, you could do it as just Montgomery and then Texas is all there.
And it's, it's obvious when you, you put, if you just put Montgomery, established eighteen thirty seven.
Well, we, we, so that's eighteen thirty seven, number four. And we will put a line on the house so you can see where it outlines it and we'll take a peek.
So we did number four. And then we're going to redo number one.
I want to pick that one. I want to pick two. I like four and five. I want to pick two logos.
I guess I have four, five, two there.
Yes.
Yeah.
We got two, give us.
We've been dealing with this too long. Everybody.
I'm going to seek my best. Come on.
Come on.
How about four or five, everybody? Can we get a heck yeah?
I agree with that. I like that. But that's just me. Don't, don't.
Hey, I don't care. Make me a cup, a cup and put some down there.
All right. You get the first one.
Number fours.
Okay.
It's fine.
You got it. Uh, so we go along with that, but four, you got it. You might, you might, we'll, we'll make some T-shirts with five for your staff and company, okay?
Right.
We're good.
Yeah, good.
Copycat.
So I can go over the, as, eighteen thirty seven on it somewhere, outline the flag and that. Who's the gentleman? It's the city sort of, who, M E D C? All right, we need to make a motion.
Oh, oh, good. Definitely have to make an action. So I'm going to, I'm going to.
She needs to say something.
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion, the council accepts item number four with the amendment to add established in eighteen thirty seven with, um, as, as acceptable logo and. An outline around the flag, yeah.
I second it.
And then, um, five is an alternate.
Oh, five's an alternate.
Five, so five is the alternate with the updated year. As acceptable logos.
Motion by Ms. Fox. Seconded by Ms. Fox. And we accept logo number four with the addition of establishment eighteen thirty seven and outline of the flag. And then logo number five with the update on the date. This motion's relevant. Our story good, took it for discussion. All is prepared. We're accepting item number four with the stated amendment. And item number five, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye. Yes, who say aye.
Yep. Aye.
Those who say aye. The ayes have motion here, we accept, we're going to go four with the stated amendments and we're going to number five. Next item on the agenda, uh, to adjourn.
Um, the motion's to adjourn.
I second.
A motion by this, seconded by Ms. Olson. All is prepared. We adjourn, you say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, the ayes have motion here, it's seconded, we adjourn.
All right.